Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Mayor Phil Logus.
Present.
Steve Summers.
Present.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Christopher Walton.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Here.
Mary Als Wu.
Here.
Diane Michaels.
Present.
Mayor Feinman.
I'm here.
Alyssa Beck.
Here.
And Katina Wiltshire.
Here.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the attendance room?
No.
Second, Summers.
Is there any discussion? Not? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion Carry. Do we have any audience participation? All right, we'll move on. So our minutes enter in your packet. Is there a motion to approve the draft minutes?
No.
Second?
Any discussion? Yes. Oh, you have it. Oh, you seconded it?
I seconded it.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I'm moving along too fast here, so.
You're doing good.
Is there any discussion? Corrections? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? With our consolidated financial reports, and I'll try and get it right this time, Orion.
So I included February's handout because we actually finalized February this week. Unfortunately, wasn't able to be included with the GIBDA today. So for today, only requesting approval of the January financials, and then I'll have February's request for approval added next month. However, I did want to talk about, you know, January and February both here within the consolidated financials. So we do have a healthy fund balance at the end of February. You'll see that the ICER Weowa funds operating on reimbursement basis match up pretty closely to their receivable balance that we've requested as far as like a cash drawdown if you're looking down at the bottom left there where it says accounts receivable. Otherwise, the only other thing mainly to note is the fact that since we operate on a modified cash basis, your fund balance beginning of fiscal year has changed from thirteen million on the January report to fourteen point one million on the February. This is because we were working on finalization of the year-end financials. The first sixty days of the new year, we're allowed to record revenue related to last year back into last year's financials. So basically, we had a net additional revenue of one point one million that we reflected back in the last year's financials, hence why when you're looking at your ending fund balance for January compared to February, why we're up about eight hundred thousand dollars. And that's about it. Anyone got any questions?
All right, thank you. Diane, second? If there's no discussion of questions, is there? Well, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion Carry. Orion, I'll let you do the list of bills.
List of bills? Yeah, if there's anything unusual you see on them, just let me know. One notable thing maybe is just that there's about one and a half million that went out of Fund Seventy-Five related to client utility and assistance within January and February combined there. That's about it there. Like I said, if you've got any questions, just let me know.
Right. Is there a motion to place, exception to place the file of the list of bills for January and February?
Second?
If there's no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Our program division updates. We'll start with Orion.
It's always fun in the morning here. So I guess to start, we did have the hard close that we worked with the auditor's office on for the last year's financials, and that took place this week. We're now making like a few small adjustments here and there to get the books ready for the auditors, hoping to have a finalized trial balance here early April and CIPA to follow probably mid-April to go along with that. Usually, CLA is asking for the CIPA. It's roughly the end of April so they can start doing their audit on the federal funding. We did have a couple of budget amendments that went through the county board related to. One I want to make note of was Weowa funding. We budgeted for, I believe it's about three million dollars roughly throughout the year, account last year's calendar year for Weowa. Unfortunately, we got to the last check run that runs at the end of February where we're allowed to reflect prior year expenses in the 2023, and we realized we missed, we were short about fifty thousand, sixty thousand bucks. So we did have to go and do a budget amendment for Weowa, basically just move funding between calendar years. It doesn't impact the formula grant as a whole or anything like that. Basically, formula grant runs on a July first to June thirtieth year end, and we're always budgeting on a calendar year, so it gets a bit tricky sometimes with knowing, you know, what year to budget the funding in. One other notable amendment that went to the county board, the ER two funding that was approved, I believe a year or two back. We've been sitting on about a one and a quarter million of that still that's just sitting in the bank, and now there's going to be about seven hundred thousand of that that's being spent down related to basically an IGA that RPC is entering into with the Housing Authority to purchase a facility to help with low-income rent. So I think, I mean, if you have more questions on that, Lisa could probably speak to that.
Thank you. Becky?
Sure. Good morning. I have to say.
Can I ask him a question?
Oh, sure. Sorry.
So what you're telling me is everything will be to the auditor's office in timely fashion, should not hold anything up on the county side for their audit?
From RPC's perspective, correct. Yeah, everything.
That's all?
Yeah.
Yep, that's great, thank you. Sorry.
All right. Good morning again, and I have to say it, go align I.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Yeah, I don't mind living in the danger zone. All right.
Some of us are Cats fans, so it's a real wonderful day for us.
Really, really terrible day.
You're inclusive of all of the teams, absolutely. All right. So included in your packet today is the personnel transaction report reporting the new hires, exits, and position reassignments from January fourteen, two thousand and twenty-four through March ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. RPC currently has two hundred and fifty-two active employees, which includes thirty-four work experience participants. The HR department has been focused on several staffing strategies, of course, to attract, motivate, and retain qualified staff. The management team is working strategically to fill twenty-two vacancies with Head Start, one vacancy with the police training program, and one open position with indoor climate research and training, the ICER program. The workforce development program, planning and community development, administration, data and technology, and community services are all fully staffed. And I want to tell Lisa, we've worked on this for a long time, and, you know, I appreciate your team. So lots of positivity here on that one. According to our data from two thousand and twenty-three, fifty-two percent of our typical hundred annual hires are sourced by creative strategies, strategic recruitment strategies of our human resources team in collaboration with division management. Approximately fifty employees hired in two thousand and twenty-three were located and sourced by our talented recruiter, Janice Mann. As of March first, we are experiencing positive trends with turnover. Our turnover is trending at fifty percent less than it was at this time in two thousand and twenty-three with only six exits since January first. Wow. I know, we're so excited. Making our annual turnover, I mean, we're only through, you know, first quarter at two percent, but this is huge compared to what I've recorded over the years. So, so excited. Other active projects include the UKG Human Resources Information System. Implementation is moving forward. We are currently refining, in the refining, refining stage of the project with the Recruitment and Performance Management Module. The recruitment module went live on March first, and the performance module for Head Start went live in mid-March. Additionally, Human Resources is in the process of developing this year's affirmative action plan with a completion target date of April fifteenth. We are also working, we have, our team, Tyler, everybody, has started the initiation of our learning module with UKG with a target date of implementation. I'm thinking of May first. The vision of this module is really going to be an interactive platform for what we're hoping to call our RPC University. So another exciting, can you tell it's exciting at HR right now? I am happy to report that RPC's employee drive to collect items to support our shelterless community went really well with over a hundred and fifty items donated from the RPC team to the Giving Box in downtown Champaign. That's what we call it. It's called something else, the kind of cupboard outside of the city buildings, and our partners at CU at Home. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is there any questions for Becky? All right. Is someone going to give Brandy's report, or? All right, Lisa.
Good morning. I just looked around and like, hey, I have a microphone, which is fine. Loud enough, I think. One of the projects I wanted to give an update on is what we refer to as SLEEP, the Safety Lighting Energy Efficiency Program. County ARPA funds, we're doing an initiative that will impact three primary neighborhoods in Champaign County, the Pleasant Acres Neighborhood in Rantoul, Dobbins Downs in Champaign, and then Scottswood here in Urbana. We've been working on that project, and special thanks to Diane Michaels to make some connections at the village. We have launched that program now, starting some outreach in the last week, sending out postcards to all the homeowners in those neighborhoods. We hope to, the timeline that we're looking at for this project is outreach currently, and as long as it takes to enroll the number of households that we can serve, we anticipate to be able to serve about two hundred households in totality. The input is exterior lighting. The outcomes, intended outcomes, are to increase lighting and safety in the neighborhoods. So installing exterior lighting, yard poles, entry lights at doors, exterior doors, and then also doorbell cameras. So in the month of April, we'll procure our contractors to do the actual installments, April through May, hopefully wrap up the household enrollment, and then May through October, conduct the actual installments in the neighborhoods, and hopefully wrap up in November and December. That's our intended schedule, best laid plan, so we'll see how things go. Orion also had mentioned the affordable housing effort that we're embarking upon. Using our remaining Department of Treasury pandemic relief funds, we're focusing our efforts on increasing affordable housing in Champaign County. There was a recent report out from the Housing Action Illinois that found that here in Illinois specifically, there's only thirty-six affordable and available rental homes for every one hundred extremely low-income renters in our state. I think that's not news to anyone that affordable housing is difficult here in Champaign County. So RPC is partnering with the Housing Authority to purchase an apartment building near downtown Urbana, provide permanent supportive housing to formerly homeless single households. That's carryover for whatever Orion had referenced. Those are two primary things that we've been working on recently, and continuing to do all the other work that we're doing in community services.
Thank you. Is there any questions for Lisa?
So how do you find the clients to go into that? It's a new building, so I understand.
We have a very specific tenant selection plan that we wrote into the IGA. As I think particularly a number, you know, City of Champaign knows with the Stride Shelter, on any one night, there's about fifty to sixty at least single-person households, single people that are living in shelter or transitional housing in our county. With that, there's about, we'll say, sixty-five permanent supportive housing subsidy vouchers that are specific for homeless households. Those are all permanent, so they're filled. So there's not necessarily a movement. So we created a special tenant selection plan that would, in our ideal vision, those that are on our permanent supportive housing vouchers, maybe that have been there longer and are more stable, would potentially move into, they'd have ability to move into this more independent housing that has maybe less wraparound services, to then open up those permanent supportive vouchers for new homeless folks to move into those. So it creates a flow or continuum of housing options.
Is there case management for the people moving into the apartment?
We hope to be able to extend case management. It's always optional with housing-first models, you know, whether people want to engage, but we want to be able to offer support services.
Do we have Rita or Justin? Is there anyone to do the remarks today? Tyler?
Good morning, everyone. Updates for the Data Technology Division. As you know, the RPC and the county are implementing a new timekeeping system in the UKG rating platform due to the old chrono system no longer being supported. The new time and labor system is nearly complete. It only requires successful tests of the payroll export and process and function. The system has been difficult to implement with both the county and the RPC using a single system and the grant funding for the RPC, which requires complicated timesheet and payroll reporting. These items together, including some delays from the UKG side, have pushed back for go-live date. A timeline for the training of each division on the new system is currently being developed, and training resources created by the RPC have been shared at the county. And as you heard from Becky, we're also moving forward with several HR modules in the UKG rating system as well. For the Sierra system, which tracks enrollments for programs across the RPC, we have recently upgraded it to include a geo-reporting site that I'm going to show on the screen here. The data on enrollments for programs has been incorporated into a standalone site that can be displayed geographically, the enrollments in RPC programs and services. The site will allow us to display the demographics associated with enrollments and can be filtered by jurisdiction or by county. So I kind of want to show, just view what we see here. This is a printout of the site that we have. It's not the actual site, so it's not interactive. But here you can see we have a variety of different filters that you can choose from, start-stop dates for the date ranges, age ranges, all those kinds of things. And you can see the totals for the number of enrollments and then the number of distinct individuals that fill these enrollments in. As we scroll through further, we see we've got information on the date as far as it goes back to for the different programs that we have in the system at the moment. As you see, some go back several years, some only go back a year or two. And one of the best parts of this system is the geographic mapping part of it, which allows us to show geographically for either county or jurisdiction the impact of the programs in that area. This is, useful summaries and graphs are provided as well further down the line, summaries on statistics by age, by active programs, statistics by county, by ethnicity, and including some graphs about the enrollments within programs. As you see, Lyke is one of our highest enrolled programs, active programs. And you can see for cities within Champaign County, which we have the most active number of enrollments in, things like that. And of course, simple graphs for the breakdown of ethnicity and age, and this is one of our, one of our nicest ones. It shows the program enrollment across years. And as you see, Lyke kind of throws this graph out of whack, but if that was removed, it gives a much better view of all of enrollments across all of jurisdictions within the years. So this is currently still being worked on. We're doing some work on the quality checking, the imported data. Some data is entered directly into the system, and some data is imported from federally mandated systems. So we're working on that, and we're also building, developing a demographics overlay that will pull in census data into this mapping application to allow you to do further analysis on our enrollments compared to demographic information from census. So beyond this, besides this, we're also working on the Data Portal update. The Data Portal is a site that's designed to host geographic data sources created both internally by the RPC and across jurisdictions of East Central Illinois. The site provides this one-stop shop for publicly available data sets that can be utilized for impact analysis and data mining. We'll be updating this site to improve the layout design, usability, as well as researching more data sets to incorporate, such as enrollment information from our Sierra system as a possibility. We're also continuing work on several planning and community development grants, specifically the Lincoln Avenue Corridor Study, the Long Range Transportation Plan, and the Cloud Migration. We are set to begin our sidewalk data collection next month for the annual collection of that data, and we're working on grant applications for two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six here. Those are my updates. Are there any questions? And we'll be able to provide jurisdictions with regular reports once the system is ready on the impact of our programs within these jurisdictions. I think it will be very helpful for jurisdictions going forward.
Thank you. Is there any questions? All right. No, no. All right, Tammy.
Good morning. The first thing I'd like to do is formally invite everyone to our employee recognition event. You should have a flyer at your spot. It's my understanding that the commissioners have not historically been included in this event, and Delitzo and I talked about it and felt like it would be a great opportunity for you to come and meet and co-mingle with the employees. So this is going to be April twenty-fourth. It will be at the Holiday Inn, starting at seven forty-five. Breakfast will be served, and we'll have Debbie send out calendar invite so we can try to make sure we have a head count of who will be able to attend. You have in your packet this morning a two-page infographic that was developed for RPC to use as a tool as we began and have been searching for new space for our administrative offices. So this is just designed to kind of give a snapshot of some of the programs that we provide and the reach of our programs into other counties, and also demonstrates how much the commission has grown over the last twenty-five years. If you see here, in nineteen ninety-nine, the budget was four point six million, and our current budget is almost sixty-two million dollars. We've over-doubled in terms of number of employees. One of the things that we are strategically working on right now is working with legislators, and I think I mentioned this a couple of months ago, to try to get the legislation changed that would allow all regional planning commissions in Illinois to be able to own property and also finance property. So right now, there's just a carve-out in the legislation that allows joint regional planning commissions, I think along the Illinois River, to own property. So this would open up more opportunities for us, and I know Delitzo has been speaking with Senator Farachi, and then I also have a meeting tomorrow with Landon Stinger from Chapeau-Rose's office to discuss with them this as well. So we feel like being able to own our own facility provides us with more security long-term and also would remove, you know, any additional property taxes that would have to be paid. And ultimately, if we can identify funding that would go towards this, or even if we are to issue debt, we would be able to pay off this facility over time and reduce our administrative overhead. And the lower our administrative overhead is, that gives us more ability to put funding back into programs. Are there any questions about that before I move on?
I do have one question. Is the plan then just to stick here until there's a determination about that legislation, and then it then falls through? What's the timeline for making that decision? At what point in time do we say, okay, this is not going to legislatively happen for us, we need to move and figure that out?
Right. So right now, our lease agreement with the county goes through the end of two thousand and twenty-six, and, you know, we have been regularly meeting with the county. The county has been open to, you know, letting us stay here. We would have to work through those details, but ultimately, our goal is to find new space. If the, first of all, I didn't mention that there was unanimous support from the regional planning commissions. What committee is that, Delitzo, that needs?
So this is the Illinois Association of Regional Councils that has all the regional planning commissions as the members. And so we presented this idea of amending the statute to them, and as Tammy indicated, it was unanimous in terms of how this has been problematic for regional planning commissions, not just owning their own buildings, but some other programs that they do, that this is a burden for them. And funny enough, the tri-county regional planning that has the exemption in the statute spoke up and said, yeah, we had our legislator do this for us, and in the end, we ended up not even buying the building we were trying to buy. So, but just to add to that and then maybe answer your question further. Unfortunately, we approached the, our senator when the timeframe for bills to be introduced had passed. And so what he has done is requested from the Senate President's Office for a shell bill to be used for this purpose, and he called me two nights ago, I think he was driving back from Springfield, that the attorneys on Senate staff were reviewing the statute to make sure that we don't open a Pandora's box. But other than that, he didn't foresee any problems with this moving forward, and if we do get Senator Rose to cosponsor, then we could have a bipartisan piece of legislation that, you know, may end up passing both chambers. But as far as what we have done historically in terms of space, so either we rent from another public entity, so in this case, we are tenant of the Champaign County in Rantoul for our Head Start facility, we're a tenant of the village. When we were in Savoy, we were a tenant of the Village of Savoy. And so as far as mitigating some of the expenses like property taxes, we didn't have to pay those. In other instances, we've had to use a not-for-profit that is out of Springfield that has purchased properties and then leased those properties to us. So our site here in Urbana, as well as the site in West Champaign, those are owned by a not-for-profit in Springfield but have been leased back to us. And so in those instances, we're not paying property taxes. We have maybe one or two instances where we are leasing from for-profit entities, workforce office in Douglas County, we're leasing from some attorneys, and then the Youth Assessment Center, which we're leasing from the Shovlands. In those cases, we, I don't know if we're paying property taxes on the YAC, but in those cases, we may be paying property taxes. But those are small space compared to what we would need for RPC infrastructure.
Okay, thank you. I've got, you know, two more things. The strategic plan that goes from two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-five calls for an annual update to the commission. So the division directors have provided information, and that is included in your packet. I'm not going to read through this. I plan to touch on a couple of things in here, and I think some of our directors have already touched on those today, but I'll go ahead and revisit them. The number of vacancies organization-wide has decreased from one hundred pre-pandemic to twenty-three vacancies. That was as of the end of February. And so Becky referred to, you know, the work that went into that. Also, implementation of the Human Resources UKG platform that is completed and underway in terms of timekeeping, of course, and the website redesign, which happened last year. Also, you just saw the Sierra application, and that was another thing that was a pretty big accomplishment for two thousand and twenty-three. So the SMT team, the senior management team, meets on a monthly basis, and we've already been talking about the tactics for two thousand and twenty-four, and there were some things that did not get completed in two thousand and twenty-three. I mean, it was a year of transition for RPC. I know there was some long-term vacancies, there had been some turnover in some key positions. So I just wanted to point out that if you review this, you can see that a lot of work was done by the division directors last- was done by the division directors last year. And then the last thing I want to mention is that we are currently in the process of getting a contract for a consultant that would be assisting us with an organization-wide cultural assessment, and we expect to have a contract completed next week. This is something that we have determined is necessary for RPC to be more proactive and strategic about driving the culture that we want to have here as an organization. So we're very excited. We actually spoke with four different consultants, and we narrowed it down to one. We're very excited to get, to start working with her, and we'll be providing updates on that after that work gets underway.
Is there any questions? Right here. I'm sorry, do you?
What cultural deficiencies are you looking to correct?
Well, I think the first step is mainly going to be that we just want to get kind of an analysis across the organization. I mean, I don't think we necessarily want to go to her and say, we have XYZ problems. I think we're going to talk about what things we have experienced as an organization, and let her do that deep dive, and bring information to us in order for us to work with her and derive, you know, changes that we think need to happen and that she suggests need to happen.
What are some examples of things that you've seen that you think are areas of improvement?
We've had, and of course, you know, I've only been here six months, but there have been a couple of instances that we have had to address where, there have been situations of racial accusations. I can't speak specifically to those instances, but areas of concern that we want to try to figure out, you know, what is it that is underlying these situations, and how is it that we can be more proactive about ensuring that we have an organization that is safe and accepting?
So it's not, it's not quite a cultural aspect that the organization has set, but it's more of helping employees understand the necessary competencies so that they can be more effective, because it doesn't sound like it's a structural thing within the organization, it's more of a learned behavior thing that you're looking to correct.
Yeah, so sometimes we use culture and climate interchangeably, but really, it's supposed to be climate. And, and it's not just the example that Tammy provided. I mean, we've had some instances where staff have brought up psychological safety as an issue. So it's a broader thing that we want to look at, and I think to her point, we don't want to go into this with any kind of preconceived notions based on some example.
No, of course not.
Exactly. We want to have, you know, have this outside person looking in, you know, provide us with her observation and recommendations, and then we collectively work together to, you know, if there's any changes we might need to make, or improvements we need to make, then we would do so. But we want to have a climate that is conducive for staff to thrive and grow within our organization.
So it is more internally focused than it is externally?
It is internally focused, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right. If not, do I hear a motion to accept and place on file the program division updates?
Summate.
All right, thank you. If there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, motion carries. Delitzo?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Commissioners. I'll be brief. I just returned last week, I was in Washington DC attending the National Community Action Foundation Legislative Conference, and on the sidelines of that conference, did have the opportunity to meet with both of our Congresswomen. So Congresswoman Mary Miller, this was my second time meeting with her in person, the first time was with Champaign County first, but this was the first time with, meeting with her regarding the RPC. So I was able to present to her and her legislative director various fact sheets of programs here, so she kind of has an overview of what we do, not just in Champaign County, but in other counties that also touch her congressional district. And then I had a meeting also with Congresswoman Nikki Podzinski, and her new legislative director, and she's pretty much familiar with us, and she's visited some of our programs. But more specifically with her, I was able to discuss the Head Start program, and some of the challenges that we're now overcoming with respect to vacancies, and the, what we had to do to address that by reducing, you know, enrollment. And funny enough, the day before I met with her, she met with the federal director of the Office of Head Start, and so what I was relaying to her was pretty much in line with we had, what he had shared with her the day before. And then we already talked about the legislation on property ownership for RPCs. The other one that I reported at the last meeting was the Laheed legislation. I think I shared with the commissioners that currently in the statute, there's a sunset clause, which the, right now, I think, so this is state statute, the sunset, January 1st, 2025, and if that were not extended, then we would lose state funding for Laheed, which is about $100 million a year statewide. So worked with Representative Kara Emmons, and she introduced House Bill 4471, which essentially now just eliminates the clause, there would be no dates included, and that legislation is now sitting in the Appropriations Committee in the House. And so we are, we feel, I mean, it's pretty much supported on a bipartisan basis, and so we're hopeful that this will happen before they adjourn.
Delitzo, do we need witness slips? In favor?
Yeah, once they, yes, when they schedule the hearing, absolutely, absolutely, absolutely. Yes, thank you.
The numbers for Laheed don't lie. You're right there.
Delitzo, the community member?
Oh, sorry. So, I forgot about that. Due to, you know, COVID, kind of lost track of, well, keeping track of the community member positions, which are appointed by, by the commission to serve a two-year term, and then, you know, those terms can be extended if those members are willing to continue to serve. One of our members has not been able to attend the meetings, and so we will need to probably go through the process, and I believe the chair will have to appoint a nominating committee which consists of the, the original incorporators, I forget what the term is, of the RPC, and then one other member of the commission to do that. So Kelly Blandon, I think is.
So it's Urbana-Champaign and Rantoul, right?
Yes, yeah, yep. So.
We're in Champaign County.
Champaign County, Champaign County, City of Champaign, Urbana, Rantoul.
Well, it needs to determine that would probably be around fall, we would need to do that, so.
Yeah, because their terms begin in December, so I'd say in the fall, forty-five days before the term ends, I think we would need to go through.
Does she want to resign early, so we can fill the spot with somebody else who's in the tent?
She, basically, because she couldn't attend the meetings, that was her concern, that she was not being a part of the, you know, she didn't say she wanted to resign, she was just, the concern of not being able to attend meetings due to her schedule on Friday mornings.
It just seems like waiting till the fall, she can't come to a meeting.
We can ask her if she wants to, yeah.
Definitely knows.
We can ask her.
All right. If there's no questions for Delitzo or anything, we'll, old business, one thing we have on new business is we need to go into closed session. So is, can I make the motion? Okay. At my board meeting, I always have someone else to look and read to go into the motion, but I didn't know if I could go and read the motion then. Okay. I move that the RPC commissioners go into closed session pursuant to five ILCS 120 slash 2C1, to consider the appointment, employment compensation, discipline, or performance of specific employees of the Champaign County Regional Planning Commission.
Okay, I'm going to call a roll.
Yes.
Mayor Philen Bogus, Steve Summers, Mayor Smith, Christopher Walton, Mayor Marlin, Mayor Asfu, Diane Michaels, Mayor Finan, Alicia Beck, and Kaitina Wiltshire. Thank you.
So this does have any excuses?
So I'm going to go into closed session pursuant to five ILCS 120 slash 2C1, to consider the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, or performance of a specific employee of the Champaign County Regional Planning Commission, and that closed session includes the necessary regional planning commission staff, which is Delitzo Solomoyo, Becky Krueger, and Debbie Petrow. Anybody else? Okay. Second.
Now we'll do roll call again.
Okay.
Mayor Philen Bogus, Steve Summers, Mayor Smith, Christopher Walton, Mayor Marlin, Mayor Asfu, Diane Michaels, Mayor Finan, Alicia Beck, and Kaitina Wiltshire.
Yes, thank you. We are now officially back in closed session.
We'll do roll call for, to go back into open session.
Okay, Mayor Philen Bogus, Steve Summers, Mayor Smith, Christopher Walton, Mayor Marlin, Mayor Asfu, Diane Michaels, Mayor Finan is left, Alicia Beck, and Kaitina Wiltshire.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. So we'll need a motion for the topic that we discussed during closed session. Second.
Second, second. Who's the second? Mayor.
Yes, there's no further discussion? Then all those in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed? If not, motion carries. So now, Finan, do you want the motion to adjourn?
Summate.
Second.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Do you want to make a statement? Is it a little bit? A little bit? Debbie?